Good afternoon. My name is Maria Cruz and I would like to welcome each of you to the Forum for Shemecata Board of Education Candidates. Today's forum is sponsored by the Shemecata Faculty Association. Before we get started, I want to tell you a little bit about the structure of the forum. We're going to give each candidate up to five minutes to give an introduction of him or herself to you, followed by several rounds of questions in which the candidates will have up to two minutes to provide an answer. The order in which we will ask the candidates to answer first has been previously decided randomly and the forum will conclude with questions from you, the audience. So at this time, it's my privilege to introduce the candidates for the Shemecata Community College Board of Education. The candidate from Zone 3 is Joe Van Meter. Candidates from Zone 4, James Dooley, and also from Zone 4, Ken Hector. Our candidate from Zone 6 is Diane Watson. Candidate from Zone 7, Betsy Earls. And our final candidate, also from Zone 7, is Miki Varney. Please join me in thanking these candidates for their willingness to participate in our At this point, I'd like to begin with the candidates' introduction of themselves and I'd like to start with candidate from Zone 3, Joe Van Meter.
Thank you, Maria. My name's Joe Van Meter. I live in Kaiser, Oregon, and I've raised three kids with my wife in that lovely community. And Shemecata's been part of our lives, most recently with my youngest daughter who came to school here. And she did the transfer degree. I worked for 37 years in juvenile justice in Oregon and New Jersey and was involved in the Oregon Youth Authority's Training Academy at McLaren for the last five years of my career. Education's been a big part of our family for my whole life. My parents were very, very much stressed education. We've got four teachers in the family, between nieces, nephews, and my sisters. So education's been a big part of my life. I retired in 2004 and then came to Shemecata and developed a juvenile justice certificate program with Elaine Primo, who's a professor in that genre. Let's see. I currently serve on the Salem Electric Board of Directors and also on the Kaiser Fire District Board of Directors. And I love policy work and board work. Given that my whole career was in juvenile justice and Shemecata's a big part of that in preparing folks for that area, I felt it was a time to give a contribution back to the college and that's the main reason that I'm running.
Thank you, Joe. We appreciate it. Now turn to James Dooley.
What exit on the turnpike are you from? Where in New Jersey are you from? What exit?
Well, I lived for four years in Cherry Hill.
Okay. I'm from Jersey too, so I had to say that. My name is James Dooley. Good afternoon, everybody. I want to thank Maria for being the moderator and President Roberts for being here, obviously my fellow candidates and current board members and faculty staff, and most importantly, the students. That's why we're all here today. I'd like to take a step back and just say a couple words about my background and what I think qualifies me to run. I live and work in Silverton. I have my wife Julie here, who's a special needs teacher at our local middle school at Mark Twain, helping as a teacher's aide. And that's about as closest to the educator role that I have, but I hear an awful lot and learn an awful lot from that. I also have a son, 17-years-old, who's a junior in Silverton High School. And my daughter, Jordan, is a freshman here at Shemecata and she's a recipient of the Scholastic Scholarship, which our family is extremely grateful for and one of the main reasons, among many, that has led me to step up here today to throw my hat in the ring. One of the other reasons I'm doing this is I went to a community college in Santa Monica and for me, it was such a wonderful experience and helped prepare me to transfer into UCLA. Don't hold that against me in this beaver-duck land. That prepared me and gave me the opportunity to get my BA in economics, which opened the door for me to have a very successful career in insurance and risk management. And another reason why I want to be here is to give back. A few highlights about my career. You know, I worked for a company in Seattle for many years called Cedric James. It was a very large international broker and I was their vice president and director of the National Port Authority Program. And I was responsible for the insurance and risk management for over 64 authorities around North America. It gave me a great opportunity to work with the executive staffs of those ports and the publicly elected officials. One of the other highlights in my career was I was the chief operating officer and sales manager for Rible Loan Company, the largest independent and employee-owned insurance agency in Alaska, which came a long ways from Jersey. We had over 65 employees and $100 million in written premiums. And in addition to my leadership and management roles, I also was the count exec for our largest clients that were some pretty significant clients, such as the Alaska Railroad, North Rim Bank, Central Peninsula General Hospital, Alaska National Insurance Company. One of my favorites was the Association of Village Council President. So, New York, New Jersey guy, I got to spend a lot of time out there with the indigenous people of Alaska out in the bush and it was just a fabulous experience. Through the early 2000s, we did very well, rode up the market nicely, and we had many merger and acquisition suitors. It came down to a very large financial institution made an offer on our firm and it was put to a vote by the employees and they decided to sell. At that point, I was promoted to president and worked with our board to negotiate a very favorable asset purchase agreement that gave me a lot of experience. And was responsible for winding down all the outstanding liabilities and dissolving the corporation and ultimately distributing the proceeds to the employees that were entitled to the stock. At that point, I kind of had a chance to take a little of a sabbatical and take a look at my life. I'd been on a lot of planes all around the country and all our placements were in and out of London, which not so much fun when you're going there on Sunday night and coming back on Tuesday morning. So, we stumbled across the crown jewel of Silverton in this whole valley and we just fell in love with it. Got the chance to spend a lot more time with my kids, they were 4th and 6th grade at that time. And then an opportunity came up to get involved and buy into Larson Flynn Insurance is a local little agency here in Silverton. And since taking charge, you know, it's been really exciting to implement what I've known in terms of best practices. You know, we've upgraded technology and operating systems and we're going to be green by the end of the year and paperless, which I've been hearing in the insurance industry for about 30 years, so I'm really excited about that. We streamlined workflows and looked at unnecessary costs and implemented a performance-based compensation that's really improved morale. And all that experience has been absolutely wonderful. In addition to my professional career, I've always served in boards that I've worked and lived on. I've volunteered in the community and done a lot of youth coaching. Couple of notable boards that I've served on was the Covenant House of Alaska, which worked a lot with troubled teens and some of the early pregnancy stuff to help these young people get on their feet. Also worked on the Anchorage Opera, which I grew up with in my house and it was quite fun to contribute to the arts. And most recently here in Silverton, I was on the Silver Falls Family YMCA on the Leadership Council. So, that's a little bit about me. I look forward to learning more about the Shemecata College and being an advocate for public education. Really look forward to supporting the wonderful faculty here to really serve all the students like they do so well in the trenches. So, again, I look forward to getting to know everybody a little bit more and as the great educator Derek Box said, "If we think education is expensive, try ignorance." Thank you.
Thank you, James. Next, we'd like to hear from Ken Hector.
Thank you, Maria. Again, thank you for your presence today. It's always nice when you participate in something like this to actually have an audience. So, it's refreshing to see so many people out there. So, thank you. Unlike our first two panelists, I am not part of the New Jersey connection.[617.66][617.66](LAUGHTER). I'm actually a little farther north. I was born in Winnipeg, Canada, which makes me an immigrant and a naturalized citizen. But my folks moved to Southern California when I was six, so I grew up in Santa Monica. I ended up in Oregon so I could attend the University of Portland, where I ultimately graduated, although my educational track was somewhat broken. I couldn't get football out of my system. So, after starting there, after a year at the University of Portland, I went back to Santa Monica, attended Santa Monica, then Santa Monica City College so I could play football for a couple of years. And then finally, reality sent in and that I was not going to, football was not going to take me anywhere at my skill level. So, I came back to the University of Portland where I graduated. And on graduation, moved back to Southern California, lasted two years and said, you know, it's too big, too many people, and too different. Oregon's a wonderful place, so moved back up here to Salem, started a business with a fraternity brother, did that for seven, eight years, then moved on into the risk management field where I spent 30-plus years. And then from a work background, spent the last six years with Silverton Hospitals, the Director of Community Outreach and Governmental Affairs until this past February. So, I'm now retired and able to devote more time to the things I like to do and that includes public service and serving nonprofits. And I have a fairly extensive background in that area, having served on, as an elected official, I've been on the Silverton City Council for 24 years, served 16 of those as mayor. I currently serve on, in my third year, on the Willamette Education Service District, this year as chair, and also serve in a nonprofit in Silverton. Silverton Gatherer provides parenting programs for parents and kids. Served on the boards of Woodburn and Silverton Chambers. So, I've had an extensive background in public and volunteer service, which I thoroughly enjoy. I am a lifelong believer and supporter in education. Part of that becomes, I had no choice. I'm married to a teacher of 30 years, so education has always been big in our household. We raised four kids, all grown and gone and educated, well, almost gone. We have one living with us again, with a three-year-old daughter, so that's a great challenge. But education is very important. I've always been a supporter, believer. Served several years ago on capital campaign committee for Silverton High School District when they were out seeking passage of bond to build the new high school, which was successful. And more recently, in 2008, I was the East County Representative here in Marion County on the bond committee that successfully sought and obtained passage of the Shemecata bond for $90 million and were seeing the fruits of that bond. So, again, I am a strong believer in education. I love board service. I love to be part of leadership and so I would welcome the opportunity to serve as a member of the Shemecata Board. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Diane Watson?
Hi. I'm Diane Watson, obviously. I'd like to thank Tracy and the Faculty Association for putting this together and President Roberts for being here and for all of you being here and particularly the students coming out. That's wonderful. I'm a native Oregonian. I was born and raised in Salem. I went to North Salem High and that was when there was just north and south and McNary was being built. And so, I know a lot about Salem. My children, my three children, I have a daughter and two sons, they all went to McNary High School and my two sons came to Shemecata. And now my grandkids are going to McNary High School. As far as qualifications, so I know the community, but as far as educational qualifications, I was a first-generation college student. And I thought it was so great. I went to Oregon College of Education. How many know what that is? Western Oregon State College, university now. I went to college and then university. But I went there for two years and then got married and moved to Florida and went to the University of Florida and got my Bachelor of Arts in Education. Taught social studies, secondary education, had my first child there, Christie. That was the Christie Place. We moved to Minnesota after that. And I had child two in Minnesota and then we moved to Colorado and I had my third child there. And I taught junior high school at Conrad Ball Junior High School. And I also worked at Ames Community College for five years as a lead instructor in a model job search program and a diagnostician. And that was also at the University of Northern Colorado. We were in Colorado for 13 years. And during that time, I got a master's in curriculum and instruction, content area vocational education. I got a second master's degree in psychology, guidance, and counseling. And then I finished my doctorate. Actually, I didn't finish it till we moved back to Oregon, but I got a doctorate in administration and program development, Doctor of Education. And that just shows that you can be a first-generation student. I just bit off the education, loved it, and decided after three, four degrees, that was enough. So, I, we then moved to central Oregon and I was at COCC for one year and was a counselor, it was called, an assistant professor of counseling human development, wrote a grant for a program called New Directions for Women in Transitions. And it was funded as a women's grant and coordinated that program. And then I came to Lynn Benton Community College. And I was just going to stay there for a little bit because I lived in Kaiser and my husband was commuting to Portland and I was commuting to Albany. Loved the community college and I was there for 22 years. I started out as a counselor, faculty member, was chairperson for counseling, went into administration, sometimes wondered why, but I learned a lot from that and became Director of Admissions and Records and of course was on all the different kinds of college committees like instructional standards, academic affairs, degree waivers and exceptions committee and all those internal committees that really help you understand the college. And then I was there for five years in that capacity and then I went and became Dean of Student Services, which was comparable to an executive dean here. I had both student services, all the student service areas of admissions, registration, financial aid, the Career Center, counseling, disability services, student life and leadership, trio program, which I spearheaded a grant and we got it the first round. And then the library. And then I had an instructional component, which was developmental studies, ABE, GED, and ESOL, and cooperative work experience. So, I learned a lot from that experience. I was on all, President's Staff and all the internal committees at Lynn Benton, setting goals and really understanding the insides and outside. I served on the college budget committee from the college's perspective. I helped with legislative teams, served on the legislative team and visited legislators. I worked in the community. One of the things I did was I was on the Loop Bus Commission. And you might wonder what that is. It's a bus that goes from Lynn Benton to Oregon State University. And I chaired that for a number of years, but we finally hammered out a pass program so that Oregon State paid some money and the students paid some money, it's what the college did and the students could ride free. And it was a pass program for students. And I worked a lot of different programs within the community. I was on a lot of statewide committees like the, I don't think it, the, it's the subcommittee of the Joint Boards Articulation that worked with the AOT, the, can't think of the name of it right now. But anyway, I worked on the associative arts, associative science degree, Oregon transfer associative science degrees and on a lot of different state committees. Ed Reform Transfer Committee. And I worked on committees dealing with education reform when we were talking about the SIM and the CAM. I worked on committees dealing with distance learning, distance education, chaired the committee on disability services for distance learning and spoke at many state and national conferences and served on committees and task force. So, I, my whole career has been community colleges. And to me, this is really an opportunity. I wanted to give back to my community in some capacity and I thought, wow, if I could be on the Shemecata Board, I could bring this knowledge and I could really help students because I'm really a student advocate and have been for many years. My whole career has been students and what we could do to help students in a community college. And I welcome the opportunity and I would welcome your support. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Diane. We'd now like to hear from Betsy Earls.
Thank you. And thank you all so much for the opportunity to speak with you today about the upcoming board election and about the future of Shemecata, which I think is a wonderful institution for the Mid Valley. I have lived and worked in Salem for the past 25 years. I moved here to go to Willamette Law School. I'm actually a graduate of University of Washington. Please don't hold that against me. And when I graduated from Willamette, I took a job representing employers at the Oregon Legislature. So, in the last several years, my work has moved more and more in the direction of education policy, workforce development policy, and healthcare policy. So, I was really delighted last year when I had the opportunity to be appointed to the Shemecata Board. And I really think that it has been a wonderful experience and I have enjoyed working with Shemecata very much. I'm hoping that I can remain on the board because I really believe very strongly in the work that Shemecata is doing in the Mid Valley. And that goes all the way from workforce training for somebody who just wants to find a specific job to people with hopes for a transfer degree and hoping to transfer and graduate from a four-year university, and all the way to people that come here just needing some basic skills so that they can move forward with their lives. One of the things that I have done since graduation from law school is become a CASA, which is a court-appointed special advocate, for those of you that aren't familiar with the foster care system. We advocate for kids as they go through that system. You know, in a situation where a lot of times they are the last people to be considered, the CASA supports them and helps them move forward, not only in their, hopefully, their family life, but in their education life. So, both from working with those kids and with their families, I've really gained, you know, a new appreciation for what Shemecata can do for them. And I don't mean just in terms of a higher education. I really do mean also in terms of developmental education, basic skills, and bringing people that didn't have a chance to learn as much as they could have maybe in high school up to speed so they can move on with their future. I really think that, you know, one of the things that I bring to the Shemecata Board is my long history of working with employers in the legislature as the state moves, hopefully, to stabilize its economy and work forward first into education reform. I think I have a reasonable understanding from that work of what employers in this community need and I hope to be able to continue to build relationships and connections with the employer community and the college and, to the extent possible, with our students that are looking to move out into the workforce in the valley. I think, you know, through my work on the board, I've really seen in a lot of ways how important Shemecata is to the communities that we serve. We had a few students, Shemecata had a few students, two students, come and testify at the Oregon Legislature last week on the general community college budget, on increasing the budget. And they did a terrific job. And, you know, through watching them, I could really see, they really summed up what Shemecata means to its students. Because of the outstanding quality of the education that we have access to and really to the, because of the accessibility of that education, they were able to turn their lives in new directions. And when students are able to turn their lives in a new direction, I think that means wonderful things, not only for them, but for their communities. They're able to help stabilize their communities in the future. And I don't mean just through their jobs. I also mean through their families or their future families and also any civic participation that they move toward in the future. So, I would like to remain on the Shemecata Board because I'm very passionate about the work that we are doing in the community here and I can directly see how much it benefits all of us and I want to continue to contribute to that work.
Thank you, Betsy. And last but certainly not least, Miki Varney.
Oh, thank you so much. Boy, welcome faculty, staff, students, and thank you for the invitation to be able to participate here today. I have a little bit different background than everybody else up here. I am a salmon biologist for Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife. I have been a salmon biologist for the last 20 years, but prior to that, I was teaching in the classroom. And I have continued to carry my interest and my passion for education throughout my whole career as a salmon biologist. The way that I switched was I grew up, actually grew up in Walla Walla, Washington. I went to Washington State, got a degree in zoology there, and then I went to central Washington and was working on my masters and found that I enjoyed working with the students so much that I went ahead and got certified to teach science. So, I taught science for the next few years. Then I eventually went back to Washington and while I was looking for a teaching position, a project position on Ice Harbor Dam on the Snake River opened up and I thought, what a wonderful sabbatical. I can go learn a lot of things I can take back into the classroom. So, I took on that project for the next couple of years and I thoroughly enjoyed it. I've always been passionate about fish too and I worked with the Snake River Fall Shenox Salmon Program, which has been, become one of the most successful programs in the whole Northwest. Great training and I really enjoyed it. In fact, that's one of the reasons I was hired by the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife three years ago, was to bring some of the experience and my knowledge that I worked with, with a successful program in Washington and bring that to Oregon. So, that's how I made that transition. As educators, the most rewarding thing for me is being able to reach out to my students, being able to spark that interest and ignite that interest in lifelong learning. And that's what I try to do as an educator. And that's why I've continued to be involved in the classroom, even though I've been working with fish. In fact, in 2008, Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife recognized me as their Educator of the Year for all the years that I have been putting into time back in the classroom, working with the interns, developing programs, working with, expanding your horizons and workshops and environmental activities. I've just always been engaged in the students and that's been a very, very prime, I mean, that's just something that I've always been involved in. And that's one of the reasons I'm really interested in this position. Another reason is I live in West Salem. My daughter is a senior this year at West Salem and she is planning on coming to Shemecata this fall. She was just accepted into the scholars program and she plays basketball, too. So, I'm really looking forward to it and I'm going to be participating here no matter what because I'm always involved in what she's doing. As far as why I'm interested in public service, that came about, actually what sparked my interest in public service was in 2009. I was back in Dayton, Washington. I was active with AAW and on boards and active in the community. But a very good friend of mine passed away and he had been a member of the Democratic Caucus in the House for 22 years. And I was selected as the person, as a precinct committee officer for the legislative district. I had the primary role of selecting who was going to take his spot. And it was difficult, but I learned so much about what it means to represent a district. And Bill was such a wonderful man and he had such wonderful leadership qualities. I was looking for someone that could somewhat fill a portion of his shoes. And in the process, I realized that- And in the process, I realized that I, too, had a number of those same qualities. And so, I thought, I'm not looking at the legislature, but I thought, what else can I be giving back to my community? Shortly thereafter, a position on our local city council became available. And I applied for it and was appointed into the position. And then later, I was elected into the position. So, that's kind of how I got started. And I was enjoying city council. I was enjoying the things we were doing in city council. I organized the candidate forums. As a president of AAUW, I was responsible for organizing the candidate forums and the expanding your horizons activities and other STEM activities and working with Mesa programs. And I, my life was very full and I enjoyed it. Then, my daughter started her high school career. And as a freshman, I realized that halfway through her year, she needed more challenges. And we were in a small community, and I needed to find another school for her to go to. And so, I started looking for another position. And that's how I ended up coming to Oregon. A position opened up in Newport with the Ocean Salmon Sampling Project. And I looked at it, and then I started looking at the community in Newport. The high school had an IB program. It had an ASPIRE program. The community college was there. Hatfield Marine Science Center was there. And it was a very progressive, educated, education-oriented community. So, we moved there, and my daughter flourished. She was involved in the IB program. Did really, really well, kept up her four-point, plus playing varsity sports. And it was real challenging at first, but boy, it was a great move for her and a great move for me, too. But I had to put my public service career on hold for a while. And so, that's another, one of the reasons I am applying for this position is because it's time for me to reengage. I loved what I was doing, and it's time for me to get back into it. Another thing that I've noticed, or actually following the news and following what's going on in the legislature, is what is going on right now with education reform. I am really, really concerned at the speed with which it is moving forward. I'm really, boy, once I looked at the statistics we have here, with a third of our students not graduating from high school and a third of the students in third grade not able to read, and even 50% of the students that come to our community colleges having to go back and learn some basic math and reading skills. Yes, there's a definite need for reform here. But education here has been grossly underfunded for years and years and years. And I don't know how I could, I look at this reform process, I don't know how they can look at wanting to start new programs when we can't even fund the ones we have right now.
Thank you, Mickey. Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's okay.
Thank you, Mickey. We really appreciate that. And thank all of you for sharing information about your backgrounds with us and allowing us to get to know you a little bit better.
Thank you.
At this point, we're going to turn to questioning of the candidates. And the way we're anticipating doing this is that I would address a question to one of you, and then each of you, in the order that you're sitting, would have the opportunity to answer the question as well. So, I'd like to start with the first question, addressed to James Dooley. In your estimation, what is the most significant issue facing higher education today?
As Mickey just said, stable funding. I think the alarming statistics from K through 12, you know, our ranking in the world dropping so significantly, it's stable funding. And even in these difficult fiscal times, I feel passionately about continuing to chip away at the foundation of education. And I will be a very strong advocate and a vocal person with regard to finding money wherever we can, working with the OCCA and the ACCT, the Oregon Community College Association, and the American Community College Trust, the two main lobby groups, and directly funding.
All right. Thank you, James. Ken Hector?
I would have to concur that funding is our primary issue in education overall, whether at the elementary level, a four-year university, and everything in between. James mentioned, we've seen a rather disappointing decline in the rankings worldwide in terms of education. And for the United States, as big as we are, as successful we are, to see our rankings slide so far in such a short period of time is pretty discouraging. So, and while I would say that just throwing money at a problem isn't necessarily the answer, I think clearly, when it comes to education, you have to have the resources necessary to give people the opportunity to learn. And so, I see that as a priority problem for us. And I am concerned about how the legislature is addressing this, and specifically with respect to community colleges and Shemekah. It's such a unique place. I mean, when we look at those who need education, some will do good and go to a four-year school. For some, that's not an option or a desire. Shemekah affords kids and adults the opportunity to either go on to a four-year commitment, to get specialized training. We have nationally recognized, our fire program is nationally recognized, our dental program. So, when you look at it, we have a niche for everybody, and that's such a unique thing. And we need to be able to enhance the services we provide, and it's going to take money to do that.
Thank you, Ken. Diane?
Yes, I concur, funding. I don't see how you can get around saying that funding isn't the number one issue. And I think it's funding for the state. If you look at education in its entirety, the public schools are in very bad shape. So, we take money for the community college, we take it from the public schools, do we take it from social services? There needs to be a solution to the budget problem for this state. And I can say some things that, being a native Oregonian, probably would get my hands slapped because where I grew up, you didn't even mention sales tax. But maybe we need a sales tax. Maybe we need to look at the kicker. Maybe we need to look at bringing in more business industry, healing the environment, which the community college is a great part of it. I think we're grossly underfunded. Five years ago, we had $510 million, and now, last year was $398 million for community colleges. This year, we're not sure where we're going to land. Might be 428, is what the governor's suggesting. But it's not enough. It's not enough for the student success initiatives. If you look at the fact that some of the high schools now are going to have to increase their requirements, and yet they're cutting back on days. Some classes are 50, and they're feeding the community colleges, and we're supposed to be rated on how many graduates we have. We've got to have developmental coursework. We've got to have AVEGED. We have a large population that's disproportionate in this district of ESOL students. We need to work with our constituents. But money is a problem. And I don't think it's just taking it from one area to the other. We need to solve the problem for the state.
Thank you, Diane. Betsy?
So, I obviously would have to agree with the rest of my forum group up here in saying funding. But I would add to that, that the real challenge, I think, for higher education right now is not only that funding is limited and dropping, but that as kids are coming into higher education, post-secondary education, and especially into Shemekah, frankly, because of the school districts in our communities, teachers are having, teachers and professors are having to contend with kids that are perhaps less educated, even in basic skills than they have been in the past. So, I think, you know, really, universities are struggling with finding a way to make their limited resources meet the new and increased demands of the communities that they serve. And I think that that is particularly difficult, again, for Shemekah because we have some school districts that we serve that are very low income. And so, those kids have not had the opportunities maybe to develop some of the skills that they would in other parts of the state, to come here perhaps ready for college or ready for university in the same way that others would. So, of course, funding, but I would add that making do or finding ways to meet the quality needs we have with that money right now.
Thank you, Betsy. Mickey?
I, too, agree with the rest of the members up here. Funding is a major, but also, we need to look at the bigger problem. What is causing this, the problem that we're having with education? It doesn't start once the kids get here and walk in the door. It happens a long ways back. And I need, we need to focus on the reasons behind that. Some of it is changes in our societal and cultural values. Some of it is some disintegration of what's going on in the families. Some of it with both parents working. I mean, there are a lot of things at play here. And the funding is an important part of it. But I think Shemekah's role also needs to work with the community, with the school districts, and work at programs that get to the kids younger, at younger ages, and be able to encourage them to want to pursue degrees after they graduate from high school or even graduation from high school. I think Shemekah could play a very large role in that, but just by reaching out and sharing some of the students and programs with the students at the lower levels.
Thanks, Mickey. Joe?
Ditto.
Thanks, Joe. All right. Question number two. This is going to be directed to Mickey. Mickey, as a board member, how would you ensure that the community college experience and a community college education remains affordable and accessible to our students?
Boy, that's a difficult one because it's getting less and less affordable all the time. Unfortunately, without the state funding supporting us, we need to get the money somewhere. And unfortunately, tuition costs just keep going up and making it less affordable. I think we need to change the whole model on which the funding is based. We need to make sure that our base funding is secure and stable despite fluctuations in the economy. We need to look at maybe increases in the strategic fund or the community college fund. We need the legislature to appropriate funds to other areas that we can draw from. And that is how we are going to keep it affordable and accessible. We need to reach out to our legislators. We need to stay involved, and we need to look at other areas.
Thank you, Mickey. Joe?
I think that Mickey's just scratched the surface there. Communities used to be able to decide how they wanted to spend their tax money and where they wanted to spend it. And they used to be able to support their local schools. They used to be able to support community colleges through property taxes. That was taken away from us, and we now have to play the political game with the legislature. I think until faculty and students and boards get together and decide that we need to go back and we need to revisit this whole, how are we going to support each other and how are we going to support our communities through some form of tax reform? And I don't mean reform in just tweaking things, but I mean, property taxes used to fund our local services. They funded cities, they funded high schools, and they funded community colleges. And we've moved away from that. And limiting property tax was a popular thing 25 years ago. I don't know that it still is a popular thing now. So, I would work with administration, students, and faculty to see whether there's any traction for those kinds of discussions in the future.
Thanks, Joe. James?
Well, again, I agree with Mickey and Joe. I also think it's important that, there's so much focus on cost, but there's a difference between cost and investment. And I think it's really important to realize that when you put these costs in and they go through the system and we make access affordable and give these kids an opportunity to contribute to society, to help pay their own taxes through, you know, their income and their property and whatever else they contribute back to society. And the other side of this is, I, even most recently in my agency, I heard an awful lot, well, that's the way we've always done things. That's the way we've always done things. Those are a few words that are just absolutely banned. You know, there's technologies out there, there's ways we can use the money more wisely. You know, there's always balancing the capital campaign versus, you know, supporting the teachers in the trenches. And I think, knowing my way around a profit-loss statement and a balance sheet, I'm going to ask a lot of questions. And again, as I said in my opening question, we, you know, stable funding has to be aggressively pursued. And there's some of the business community that perhaps can be looked at a little bit differently. I think about what's gone on with the viticulture program and what's happening here with the wine industry and, you know, where are we going to be at in the next 20, 30, 40 years in this valley? And what industries are going to be here? And how do we create that partnership with those stakeholders?
Thank you, James. Ken?
Well, I think Joe kind of nailed some of that. You know, actions have consequences, and usually they oftentimes take a longer time to manifest themselves. And certainly, our property tax limitations that we passed years ago, Measures 5 and 10, have come home to roost now. If you look at the current funding structure for Shemekah, and you talk about affordability, well, almost one-third of funding comes from tuition and fees. So, it's being exercised up. 27% from estate funding, 24% from local taxes, and then the rest around 18%. I mean, those are pretty significant numbers. We have to be able to revisit our entire structure. I think there's, we're beginning to see that dialogue at the legislature. If you saw the paper today, once again, sales taxes has reared its head. And I don't think any of us want to pay taxes any more than we do. I don't think we want to give the legislature free rein with our pocketbooks. But with respect to a sales tax, we are a heavy tourist state. There's a whole lot of money that we're leaving on the table for tourism dollars that would be paid by people from other states, and why we don't take advantage of that. Conversely, on the other hand, just handing a new tax to the legislature, who, I'm going to say it, I don't think they spend properly or wisely. So, there's got to be some limitations. But we have to revisit how we're going to fund. Our whole economic survival is predicated on putting people into the workplace that are educated. Look where the good jobs are going now. People are coming from overseas, from India and Pakistan, picking up high-paying jobs because we're not educating. We have to rethink our whole funding structure to put the priority on education here in the United States so we turn out people who can be skilled, can be successful in the workplace.
Thank you, Ken. Diane?
Well, I agree, we need to revisit funding, whether it be the kicker, whether it be sales tax, whether it be property tax, looking at eliminating some of the laws that have been passed concerning funding for the state, maybe having local levies again. All those things need to be looked at. But as far as affordable, I think right now, one of the things we can do is boost up our scholarship program, which is, we have the Shemekah Scholars Program. We're doing some things in those areas at Shemekah already to try and make it more affordable. And compared to a university, it is more affordable right now. But students are still coming out with loans. The financial aid doesn't cover it, Pell Grant doesn't cover it alone. But, and as far as being accessible, I think, I don't think this part has been addressed. I think we are accessible. When you look at the number of campuses that we have in the community, in Brooks and Woodburn and Yam Hill and around, we are quite accessible. People can get in and get some help and help with navigating the financial aid ropes and getting into college. But affordable, we're really at the breaking point. And I hate to see tuition go up anymore. But, you know, if you're going to make an equality education, you're going to make sure you have the support services. It costs more to do those types of things. And so, it's necessary that we give the students what they came here for.
Thank you, Diane. Betsy?
One of the things that I think that Shemekah does particularly well, and it's because we are in Salem and are able to get to the legislature, is advocate on our own behalf at the Capitol. And I have been to the Capitol advocating on Shemekah's behalf. I've been there with members of the administration, and I've been there, as I mentioned, with some students who frankly steal the show every time we go into a legislator's office. But they do make an excellent point about why community colleges are important and what they're doing for them individually that I think needs to be heard. So, you know, in one sense, we are already doing some of the most important work that we can. I would say that also in the Mid Valley, we need to make sure that we are seeking out investments in Shemekah from area employers. And we do have employers that are already investing in programs that benefit them directly, technical skills. But we also have, in the valley, more and more employers who say, well, I have employees who can do the technical work here, but honestly, they don't have the skills, the basic skills that I can count on them to really be able to do the job without me watching over them. And really, that means things like basic math or reading, you know, other things that people need to be successful in all areas of their life. So, I do believe that making employers aware of how some of the other things we do here will benefit them is going to help us find other ways to gain investment in our programs from them. And lastly, I think that the college is also already taking a look at some of this. But as far as affordability, we really need to be finding areas where we can address, you know, specific cost centers for students. And one of the things that always killed me when I was in college and law school was the cost of textbooks. And I don't think that's changed. And I think that what Shemekah is doing is, you know, a good start on a great example, which is looking for things like textbook rentals and textbook loans, other ways that people can access those materials without having to spend an unholy amount of money on, you know, as much as your tuition practically, on one book. So, I really do think that's a key So I really do think that's a key part, is looking for those kind of less obvious areas where we can help students save money.
Thank you, Betsy. The next question, we're going to start with Ken Hector. Ken, "The role of every community college is to serve the needs of the surrounding population. What segments of our local population in Marion, Polk, and Yam Hill counties do you believe we might be currently underserved by the college? And do you have any ideas of things that you would bring to the board to help us reach those potential students?"
You know, Shemecah has almost 42,000 students. And if you look at the breakdown from ages to all the other demographics, I mean, we do serve a broad cross-section of Marion, Polk, and the Yam Hill Counties. And then when I look at the curriculum that we offer, you know, I'm hard-pressed to say that there's an area that's underserved. I really am. And I think when you look at the Scholars Program, we take the next step to encourage people to come here, to reward academic excellence. Perhaps there are some areas that we could look at beyond the Scholars Program that would encourage kids who are not coming out of high school and going on to anything but McDonald's or somewhere else. I think there needs to be a greater prioritization of the importance of education. And unfortunately, a 16-year or 17-year-old today, and that's not a blanket statement, too many, I think, don't realize the consequences of stopping with a GED or coming out of high school. We've got to work closely with the schools to build up that priority. And the other part, where we really need to help, and I don't know that it's within the college's purview to do that, it's got to start at home. Part of the problem is, we've got kids who aren't prepared to learn because they aren't getting the basics. They're not ready to read at grade level when they get to kindergarten or third grade. So it's a systemic problem, and I don't think there is an underserved group. I think there could be broader service, but I don't think there's any single group.
Thank you, Ken. Diane?
I agree. I think we do an amazing job in the community, bringing the word of Shemecah and offering programs and working with business and industry and being very flexible, adapting, providing training in partnerships. But I agree that the one area that maybe we could move into would be even more partnerships with the high school. I know that we offer college credits there, but I know that during the cut, about three years ago, they cut out the career counselors out of the high schools. And so these students are having career fairs just kind of thrown together and are not really getting the career guidance that they once received. Maybe there's some partnership that we could do with the local high schools to provide that so that the students would know what their next step is, because right now, that's not happening. That was cut out. That was a budget cut. So that's where I would start. But I think basically, we're doing a really good job. If there's a need in the community, Shemecah figures out some way to do it.
Thank you, Diane. Betsy?
So this is a good question for my district, because I would tell you that there are areas of my district that may not necessarily be underserved, but feel that they are significantly underserved. And I think some of the administration is probably tired of hearing this from me, but Dallas and the Dallas area has the Dallas Center, which is, you know, a great facility and a great place for learning and especially getting started on a Shemecah program. But there are two things about Dallas that cause problems. One is that it was wildly popular, and people were bursting out the doors and windows practically from the day it opened. They had to remodel the staff room so that they could have another classroom in there. And they still don't have room. And the other thing is that Monmouth Independence really wants to have their own. And I know that we can't, as a college trying to, you know, husband our resources carefully, we can't obviously run out and build another building out in Monmouth Independence, especially because people could potentially drive over to Dallas, although it's already full. But this is a perfect opportunity in Monmouth and Independence for a collaboration with the high school. Diane is exactly right, that it would be a good place for us to start collaborating in the high schools with more dual credit. And in this community particularly, there is room in the high school for us to start teaching at least one or two classes out there that in our community would really, I would hate to say that it would ease hurt feelings, because I wouldn't want to say anybody's feelings are necessarily hurt, but they would feel much less neglected if we could be teaching out there, at least to some extent.
Thank you, Betsy. Miki?
Oh, boy. I guess instead of looking at it as underserved, I look at the underrepresented groups. And what concerns me is when you look at the high-paying careers or higher-paying careers in the science, technology, engineering, and math fields, those are one of the areas where there are fewer, you know, there are higher numbers of these underserved, underrepresented students going after careers in those fields. And I think that's a place we really need to reach out. But we need to reach out with the counseling before high school. We need to reach out at the middle school level. I am shocked at how many of them that I've interacted with say, you know, why should I pursue a career in that? There isn't any reason, because nobody I know is active in it. That's only for certain people, and I could never do really well. In fact, I was absolutely shocked on Saturday. I was listening to the student body president from Willamette, and she said, when she was looking at school, she went to her biology teacher and asked him about Willamette, and he said, "Why are you interested in that?" Because Willamette's basically white, hard, and requires money. And she's Hispanic, and I thought that was one of the worst things I had ever seen. If that sort of attitude is what these kids are getting, we can do better. We can reach out to them and encourage them to pursue fields that maybe traditionally might have seemed more difficult. I think that's what we need to do.
Thank you, Miki. Joe?
One other population that we could outreach to would be the retired generation, since I am retired. I did say that early on. I believe that there are some services that we can offer folks. There's a lot of state agencies that do little pieces of it here and there, from senior services to disability services. And I think there's some avenues that we can look at in that area. And we'll explore that with administration, faculty, and students as time permits.
Thanks, Joe. James?
It's always tough going last. But there is something, I think. Shamefully, you know, as I said, we're pretty low on the top 30 most industrialized countries for performance. One thing we're really good at that's very shameful is the incarcerated. I think there's tremendous opportunity to reach that underserved population. It seems to me that it's a disproportionate amount of people of color who are being warehoused as a generation, not perhaps so much around here, but across the nation. And I think the cost of that, I mean, what do they say? They say health, teaching, and prison. That's where a lot of the state money goes. And it just seems to make sense that if we can reduce the recidivism, reach out and give a second chance to these people. I think that's a very underserved segment of the population.
The next question is going to be addressed to Joe. Joe, as a board member, your work will undoubtedly chart the course of the college for years to come. What is your vision for Shemecah over the next five to 10 years?
Well, to do all the things that have just been mentioned. I think stable funding is still going to be an issue in 10 years. I don't see the legislature moving forward, or even the voters moving forward with a different tax structure unless there's a real groundswell of that occurring. So seeking other avenues, other populations that we can tap into. The retired generation is relatively wealthy, comparatively speaking. And I think that there are some avenues that we can look at for that group.
Thank you. James?
Well, access and affordability. Community college is one of the most incredible inventions of, I think, in American society, the democracy of it. And I think we have to continue to find ways to protect or support the faculty and create the infrastructure, prepare for the next 10, 20, 30, 40, 50 years. And none of us are soothsayers or have crystal balls, but, you know, it's very interesting to me to look back on the past 50 years and see a valley that's so fertile, probably the most fertile in North America, provide 95% of the food for the Pacific Northwest. Now I think it's the inverse, unless you count wine as food, as I do. But things are changing. You know, a lot of that, of this valley, what we grow in this valley has a lot to do with labor and energy costs. And, you know, they're irrationally cheap for some reason, but things will change. So we need to keep in mind, one of the greatest assets that we have here is the agricultural piece. And what this valley will become, I think, is what it was as those costs continue to rise. So I think a vision that the college should have is to keep that in mind, along with the demographics and all the other things we're facing.
Thank you. Ken?
Well, trying to be a visionary and not just wishful thinking. In 10 years, I would like to see Shemecah in a physically sound position, where we're not having these kinds of discussions. I'd like to see us recognized as one of the top 10 community colleges in the United States. And most importantly, I'd like to see Shemecah as a major influence on the economy of the Willamette Valley. And those are kind of lofty, wishful thinking, you could say, and won't happen by just wishing it. As a board member, I would call upon my experience in my professional life, which, like Betsy, has taken me to the legislature for years, primarily in the areas of workers' compensation, healthcare, and matters of importance to local government. I am very familiar with the legislative process. I would say I'm pretty well-connected on both sides of the aisle, and I think that's important. And so I have the opportunity and the ability to go to where we need assistance that is going to take us forward. And that's for funding for education and for making us a place where we can become that which we seek to be.
Thank you, Ken. Diane?
I would hope that in 10 years, we would be fiscally sound, that it would be more affordable, and that we wouldn't be solving problems by just raising student tuition. That we would come full circle and have a solution, and it's a sustainable solution, as well as the college would be sustainable. I would hope that our student success, our achievement compact would have been implemented, and that students coming here, we'd have higher graduation, higher completion rates, more successful students than we have. And I imagine we would have a lot of different programs. I don't know what the world is going to be like in 10 years. Things have changed so rapidly, but I would imagine we would remain adaptable to whatever the community needs and listen to that community. Our composition between transfer courses and professional technical and short-term training and developmental will depend on what the community offers, you know, what the community needs and what the make of it is. But I would hope we would remain and listen to the community and continue the wonderful partnerships that we have.
Thank you, Diane. Betsy?
Well, I think, first of all, I hope to see us maintain the programs and the excellent faculty and the student success that Shemecah already enjoys in this community. But I also see into the future, Shemecah is taking a greater role in helping high school students be ready for higher education, whether that is doing more work in the high schools as career counselors or helping organize more dual-credit programs. I think that that will be especially important in the next several years, or running programs that are similar to the viticulture program that we have started with the high school in the area. Obviously, you know from my last answer that one part of my 10-year vision is seeing a facility and services in Monmouth and Independence, an area that desperately would like to see something there. And I would also hope to see that Shemecah had enough funding or more funding to be able to create more student and employer partnerships in the community and help more students find careers and, you know, even jobs in Salem and be able to stay and be part of our economy.
Thank you, Betsy. Miki?
I agree with Betsy. I envision having, oh, smaller outreach sites that are providing the counseling, that are reaching out to the high schools, the junior highs, or the middle schools, because by having students ready for college by the time they graduate from high school, it will benefit Shemecah immensely. And it also will contribute to our workforce development here. And we will actually have students that are graduating, that are graduating in the fields that are competitive, that require the skills in math and science, and keeping them in the community. And that's what I see as a future here. I believe we need to be fiscally sound, and I'm certainly hoping that we can get that way. In 10 years, let's see, the education reform goal, 2025, that's 13 years from now. Are we going to be near those goals? It's a pretty ambitious goal. I don't have a problem with ambitious goals, but we need to be realistic, too. We need to focus on how we're going to get there and not just see it as a vision. We need a plan. And I think Shemecah is on the right track, and it's respected, and we need to keep building on what we have here.
Thank you, Miki. I have one final question, and then we'll turn it over to the questions from the audience. My final question will be addressed to Diane. What should the community, what should the college community expect from you as a board member? How do you see yourself contributing positively to the college?
Well, I will get to know my district really, really well. I get to know Shemecah Community College. I bring a strong background in community college in general. I will be a good listener. I will examine issues critically. I will ask questions. I will get to know the students, the staff, and the faculty well. And I hope I will be very accessible. And I will work hard. There's no doubt about that, that I will be there and contribute. I will be at the legislature lobbying. I will be at events, and I will listen closely. And I was out at Brooks this morning. I've been to Woodburn. I've been to many meetings. I've been to the legislature. I've talked with legislators, Betsy Combs and several others. And I've been active in that, and I will continue to be active because I love it and it's a passion of mine.
Thank you, Diane. Betsy?
So I think the things that the community could best expect to see from the board and from me is, you know, really creating connections in the community. I think board members have a responsibility to know the area that they serve and be able to connect the college and the rest of the board with that area in order to serve that area's needs. So I think that's a very important piece. Also, in my own case, one of the things I expect from myself and will continue to do is work a great deal in the legislature to advocate for this college and for the community college system as a whole to gain greater funding, not only through the state budget, but also if there are opportunities through employers and other resources that I'm able to come across. I think, you know, obviously, one of the most important duties of any board member is to be a good steward of the college's fiscal resources and keep as careful of a watch as possible on the budget and tuition, other resources that we have available to us. And I think that covers it.
Thank you, Betsy. Miki?
Well, I plan to be very, I mean, I have been active in the community already. I mean, I've already been, I participate in neighborhood associations. I'm active with the Polk County Democratic Central Committee. I go to all different kinds of forums, town halls, because I want to get an idea what the flavor of the community is. And that's what I take into things that I do. My father, actually, my godfather often said, "Miki, you don't just ask what time it is, you ask how to build the watch." And that's basically how I approach things. I look at the whole big picture and put things together before I make decisions on things. Because of my association with American Association of University Women, I believe in breaking through barriers and building bridges and connecting.
in breaking through barriers and building bridges and connections. And that's one of my strong points with communities, is I know how to reach out and communicate and take their ideas and apply them and solve problems. And that's what I have been known for in the past, and that's what I continue, that's what I plan to continue in the future.
Thank you, Miki. Joe?
I think a board member has no individual power. I think the board as a whole can make decisions and we can move forward. And I'd implement whatever administration and the board decides, whether that's my going to the legislature or someone else going to the legislature. I don't think individually I can go and represent Shemeckah Community College without the board's approval to do so. I will be prepared for meetings. I believe in fiscal responsibility and making sure that we live within a budget. I think that's why we're voted on to be here, is to make sure that we live within our budget. I am a team player, and I love to collaborate. So, I anticipate working closely with the board and with administration, faculty, and students to move community college forward.
Thank you. James?
First of all, I'd like to say wow for the whole panel here. Pretty impressive group here, and I think the students are really going to benefit from all the candidates up here. And I'm just in awe of what I've heard today and want to say thank you to my fellow candidates here. I'm going to ask a lot of questions, and then I'm going to ask a lot of questions. I'm going to listen. I'm going to observe. I'm going to try to be a champion of common sense. You know, obviously, we have to have some fiscal responsibility, but again, I think that cost is different from investment, and as an entrepreneur, you know, we have to put that capital out there to get that return. And I also think that as a guy that's always been a broker, intermediary, maybe between insurers and insurers, or people of differences of opinion, this transcends, this is a nonpartisan, obviously, a role, and as Ken says, you know, you've got to reach across the aisles. I don't have his connections literally with that, but I think it's really important to have people check their dogmatic or extreme visions to be part of a rational conversation.
Thank you. Ken?
Well, I think the college, and that's the students, the faculty and staff, the administration, should have the highest expectations of a board member. That we be always well-informed, actively involved and engaged, be a good listener, a good collaborator, be an advocate, whether it be at the legislature, with employers, with the cities and counties that we touch, all of those who touch us, we need to be an advocate for this college. We need to provide strong fiduciary oversight of both, to protect our assets, which includes programs, which includes people, and property. In short, I think we need to be at the forefront to ensure the sustainability and viability of an excellent place for education.
Thank you, Ken, and thank all of you for your candid answers to our questions. At this point, I would like to invite questions from the audience. So, if you have a question, if you would please step forward to the microphone.
Hello, would you like me to introduce myself?
Please do.
Okay, my name's Cameron Grushel, and I'm a member of student government here. My question relates to affordability. I know there's been a lot of talk about going to the legislature and ensuring stable funding, which is, all measures are supported, but regardless of what happens this session and in the sessions to come, we students have real challenges to face regarding, you know, recent tuition increases and the rising cost of textbooks. What specific measures, as board members, would you pursue to help students face these affordability issues at the college level?
Why don't we start with Joe?
I taught a couple of classes here as an adjunct professor in 2006, 2007, and was concerned about the cost of textbooks, to the point where we did some Xeroxing in the department so that students didn't have to go out and buy special textbooks. That comes to mind right off the top of my head. And the first time I taught the class, I went out and got a new textbook. I mean, I was feeling powered, you know, I'm an adjunct professor, I know what I want to teach, and then it, we didn't get it, because the cost for that textbook was like $200, $225, and I, it just didn't make any sense. So, I understand what you're saying about the textbook side. The tuition side, I think, does go back to the legislative. The way the tax structure is today, we don't have much option, because, I mean, we can either raise the price that you pay, or we can get some money from someplace else. So, I think the legislative part is a huge part, and I think that the students and the faculty have a role to play in that, as well as the board and the administration. And I think that's the best I can answer it off the top of my head.
Thank you, Joe. James?
It's a tough question. My daughter's going through it right now, and it always amazes me how cheap they are when they're resold, and how expensive they are to get. And I, you know, I understand there's patents and copyrights out there, and it's very challenging for my daughter and for all these students. And I remember it being equally challenging, maybe not equally as challenging price-wise, but ratio-wise, when I was going to school. And as Joe says, you know, we've got to be very aggressive to, what did it go up, $3 this year for tuition per credit? Six? I mean, we just got to, we've got to fight to get as much stable funding as we can to offset that, and I wish I could give you something really concrete. And I guess there's, like, when I was a kid, sharing? I wish I had a better answer for you.
Thank you, James. Ken?
Well, I too wish I had some magic answer that was going to guarantee that, you know, that was going to be cheaper for you to come here. But I think we're all acutely aware of what costs are, not just at the college, at home, whether it's utilities, food costs, all of the things that we pay, insurance, healthcare, everything going up. At the end of the day, we have to be able to pay the bills, and I don't care if that's at home or that's at Shemeckah. So, that's a big responsibility of your board. That said, I also believe that this board has demonstrated a recognition and sensitivity to the cost to attend here, and I commend them for that. The longer term probably is going to be a legislative fix, and that's not going to be an answer to your need the next time you have to write a check. But I think other places we can look are, and again, I say this with the belief that the board is doing a good job, but I think we have to look, okay, are there some areas we're missing, either on the revenue side or on the expense side? Are there some areas we can cut that are controllable, that won't impact the quality of the education we are trying to deliver? So, it's all of those things. It's kind of the old, let's not leave any stone unturned, whether it's on the revenue side. Can we do something like with Vediculture, make it a profit center? You look at the prison system with their, they actually have people working to give them a skill, and they sell those in the workplace. They do laundry for businesses, those kind of things. So, with our trade training, are there some things that we could do, when we teach somebody how to weld, where we can get a revenue source out of that, back to the college? Those are the kind of things we have to become a little bit innovative, entrepreneurial, and look at those kind of things that maybe, and it's probably not going to be huge dollars, but any dollar that we can either bring in or reduce an expense somewhere else that doesn't impact our core mission, then I think we have a responsibility to you to do that.
Thank you.
I dealt with this, I retired five years ago, and before I retired, this was a big question, and the Council of Student Service administrators were talking about it, and we brought it back to Lynn Benton, and I brought it to Academic Affairs, and out of that came a subcommittee with faculty, students, and staff on it to discuss this. And one, some of the faculty, I don't remember all the ins and outs, but some of the faculty came up with the idea that they would really look for a textbook for the department rather than individuals. So, if there are three US history teachers, they would cooperate and buy one, so if a student transferred to another class, they wouldn't have to buy another book. There was, Developmental Studies was developing their own materials, so they could buy those, they just print them off, they sell them to the bookstore. The math department, at the basic math and algebra, elements of algebra and Algebra II level, developed their own packets that they could buy there. Faculty looked for textbooks that would be in print more than one year, that they might use for two years. Some of these things helped, so that if the student went, they could trade it in, at least, he'd get some money. There would be textbook swaps, and I understand there is a lending library here at Lynn Benton. As for the tuition question, I think we've discussed that. We just need funding, so it doesn't come on the backs of students.
Thank you. Betsy?
So, just to speak to the textbook issue too, I think we've all been there and felt that pain, and I think a lot of us feel like it's ridiculous, honestly, the amount of money that you have to spend for textbooks. I think really, we have a good start with the program that we've started in the bookstore with rentals and the lending library. I'm not sure how big that program is, and I do think it would be a good idea for us to look into perhaps expanding it to other classes and more books being available. You know, one of the things that occurred to me as I listened to you ask the question is that, I think textbooks are an easy target, but I don't know all of the cost centers anymore that a student really has, you know, outside of the obvious ones. And it would be worth, I think, us at some point collaborating on perhaps a survey or a conversation with the student association to find out, you know, where your biggest costs are. We may not be able to find a solution, but I can think of some areas off the top of my head that we probably would be able to. And if we can identify them and measure them, you know, I believe we have a better chance of controlling them. The other thing is something that's been mentioned really is to work more with investors in our community, to get them to invest in specific programs and see how our basic programs are advantaging them. And I guess my overall feeling about the legislature is that it's good to go work with the legislature in Oregon, and Shemeckah is excellent at doing that, but I don't think that money's ever coming back. I really think, from having been there for far too many years, that what we are going to have to do as a system, as a community college, is find ways of being less dependent on that, you know, and hoping for the best and advocating to the extent that we can. But you've seen this in the university system in Oregon, those big research schools are moving away from their dependence on state funding. It's becoming less and less of their budget, and of course, we don't have of all the things that will draw investors to us in the way that those schools do, but I think that's going to be the thing we have to look at for the future, really. And I know it's not immediate, and it's a bummer, but that's kind of where I am.
Thank you, Betsy. Miki?
Well, I agree. I think we need to find out where the major costs are for sure, and look at innovative ways that we can address and maybe help in some ways. I agree with Betsy that possibly getting local industry, local businesses, investing in programs and internships, and maybe helping provide some of the support in return for some of the students coming and working with them. You know, I think we need to be innovative and look for other ways. In terms of the textbooks, I think the rental idea and sharing them is great. I know my daughter gets a lot of her assignments and works with them online. She has, you know, her math assignments and everything, she goes to her website at the school, and she's downloading all those assignments. In fact, in a number of her classes, they don't even use textbooks. And perhaps that's something that can be looked at, or maybe there are certain classes that maybe can get away from the traditional textbook system and focus on other ways they can do it. Perhaps more online classes, meeting the requirements, you know, I just think we need to be able to look at what other options we can, because the additional funding is not going to be there from the legislature until the economy picks up here in this state. And I, you know, I have my own ideas about that. I think that there's definitely some things we could be doing. Of course, working for Fish and Wildlife, I'm a little biased. But anyway, I just think, yeah, identifying the problem and looking for new ways to come up with some answers.
Thank you, Miki. Do we have other questions from audience members? Please step forward and introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Marty Carty. I'm enrolled both here and at Western. One question I have, and some of you guys just mentioned it, and I have to agree with Betsy and Miki both, I don't see the money coming back from the public standpoint. So, I think it's a great, great to hear you say that you're interested in finding other ways. But something you guys did mention and really didn't address for me is, how or what would you do specifically to help make us more competitive, knowing that maybe there's not more money coming out of Pike, but we are falling behind from an education standpoint with the rest of the industrialized world? So, what kind of innovative ideas could you bring to the community college level to help us be more competitive in the world?
Why don't we start with Betsy this time?
Sure. I think, you know, that is an excellent question, and some people have addressed the issue of Oregon and really the United States not being as competitive as the rest of the industrialized world in terms of our education, educational attainment. I think one of the things that Oregon is trying to do right now, and I believe has some chance of success, is starting earlier, and I think, starting earlier in terms of grade school and even pre-K, to bring kids along, I think, in a smoother trajectory towards college. So, they are able to, you know, they have a more uniform education across the board, starting at the very beginning, are able to transition into grade school more easily and more uniformly, and have some of that remedial work perhaps done at a lower level than by the time they get all the way to the community college. To the extent that the post-secondary system doesn't have to deal with as much developmental and remedial work, it will have the opportunity, I think, to innovate and look for other ways to serve the community and its students that will benefit all of us in terms of moving forward in relation to the rest of the world.
Thank you, Betsy. Miki?
I think reaching out to the students before they get here is the most important, whether we can get them involved with activities that are actually happening here at Shemeckah, and let them see how, what the college experience is really like and what it can be for them, and having college students reaching out to them, I think, will really, really help. I think we need to continue to have high expectations and even higher expectations, especially in the middle schools and the high schools. Our students can perform, they just need the support, and unfortunately, they don't have that good family support, a lot of them at home. And we need to find ways that we can provide that support and tell them that they can do it. And I just, I think there's a way we can, just by reaching out more. I'm concerned about the achievement in the sense that if, I'm really concerned with the achievement compact, and if they are linked, end up being linked to our funding, our focus may get away from what we're really trying to do for our students, and that's a real concern for me. I think Shemeckah is doing a great job, and just as I have said, continuing to reach out to those students is going to pay off and pay immense benefits.
Thank you. Joe?
You know, that's a huge question, and it goes to the whole culture that we have in this country. I spent 37 years in juvenile corrections, approximately 65%, and give me some, it's been a few years, were learning disabled when they came into the correctional, juvenile correctional facilities. So, a huge amount of money goes into remedial education in the juvenile corrections facilities through Willamette Education Services District. So, there isn't a simple answer, but I think it's a cultural shift needs to occur, whether it, you know, and I'm feeling like a philosopher today, you know, we need to have a groundswell to change the tax system, but it's a cultural shift. It has to be a cultural shift back to education. My parents didn't have huge educations. My mom graduated from high school, my dad had two years of college. We all graduated. We have a PhD in our family. We have a lawyer in our family. We've got educators in our family with master's degrees, and it's, so it's a culture that's developed that says, this is the expectation, this is the goal. And I don't know that I know how to do that, but I do know that I'll work hard with administration and with the board and faculty and students to see what we can do, to raise that bar so that we're more competitive both locally and globally.
Thank you. James?
Where'd Marty go?
Where'd Marty go? Yeah, it was a very, very good question. I know from my experience where I was hiring a lot of the kids when I was, had a bigger firm, the gap between the academia and then the workplace. And I think exploring some of those internships availability, if you're interested in insurance, you give me a call, and most kids your age aren't, but it's, you know, it's an interesting business. And then, and, you know, again, the question is, is it from junior college above or starting at ground zero? Like my colleagues here have been saying, you know, the advising and the counseling piece is huge. I spoke with our superintendent just today at our local school district in Silvergin, Annie Belando, about how grateful he is working with the community college here and the ability to get credits online and get a feel for what it takes to have that caliber of class and that edge. Even a very close colleague, a partner of mine, commented today about his own daughter, you know, 22 credits. Why at home? Why before all that stuff that goes on when you go into college? I think that's tremendous competitive advantages. So I don't have all the answers, but I think that getting out in the real world as much as possible and kind of making that bridge from academia to the application piece can certainly help you with, I don't mean this to sound like a racial slur, but Ravi and Mingming, you know, who are having our jobs. When I was kids, we were told to eat our peas and carrots because there's people in India and China starving. Now it's like, we gotta tell our kids, we gotta do our math homework, you know, and we've gotta create that culture at ground zero. And, you know, it's a competitive global world. And just seeing my own daughter go through some entitlement issues, you know, it's not a given that we're going to have as good as our parents or their parents, and we have to be really realistic about that in educating people on that counseling piece so that they have to be competitive. There's no free lunch.
Thank you, James. Ken?
Well, Marty, I wish there was a silver bullet here to hand to you that, you know, would solve this all, and I think you and I both know that there isn't. And I agree with Joe's comment. I mean, I think our problems largely are from a cultural devise, if you will. You know, the last 50, 60 years in the United States, if you look how the family structure has changed, you know, you can see I've been around for a while. You know, when I was young, mom wasn't home, she made sure that we did homework, we read, we didn't sit in front of TV, all of the things that are precursors to sound education. The workplace has changed, society's changed. Now we have both parents working out of necessity, and in some cases, working multiple jobs. So what's happened, for young kids, which is where we really need to spend the time, they don't get the time or attention. So it ends up, we have kids coming to school, starting with kindergarten, that are ill-prepared to learn. My wife's a middle school teacher. I am appalled as I read papers with her at the extent of where these kids are with literature. I mean, you're seventh and eighth grade, and you can't even put a cogent sentence together. That says something about the whole fabric. I guess I'm a little encouraged, you know, by the governor's goals on education, pretty lofty, but one of the pieces of it is refocusing on early education. And I think that, more than any other place, is where we really need to focus. We can send students to teachers all we want, but if you don't have something to work with, your chances of being successful, and at this level, if a student isn't motivated to learn, you could be the best instructor at Shemecata, and if you've got a student that isn't motivated to learn, at the end of the course, they're not going to get much out of it. And it's worse if you have a kid that doesn't have, going into elementary school, the skillset already, the background, so that they can learn. We have to do a major step back and embrace some of the things that made this country great. And I think that's going to start with how we're educating our kids before we send them to school. Give them the tools to be successful. Long-term project, but at least I think it's recognized now, and I appreciate the governor's focus on early education.
I do too. I think that, again, money is playing a role in this when we have large class sizes, and we have decreased days during the school year for students to learn, and they have long summers and long breaks, and they forget a lot of material during that time. I also think there's a real need for career guidance all the way through school, that students are working towards some type of goal and are aware of different careers and opportunities, because knowing this can give them meaning and purpose in going to school. A lot of students start dropping out when they're in middle school. That's the age they drop out. There used to be a lot of professional technical schools, classes offered in high schools. It's not happening anymore. They're expensive, so they cut back on those. Those were some of the areas where students would find that they wanted hands-on, they wanted to learn something different. I was at Ames Community College, and we had a program there where students were screened in during their sophomore year, interviewed, and they could go out to Ames Community College, their junior, senior year, and start on a professional technical career. That's one role Shemecata might play in this, because if they're not interested in going further and they're college-directed, they want to get, they're started on a career, this might save the students and also give them the skills that they need to get out and get a job rather than just floating around. I like the governor's proposal. I'm glad somebody's doing something with it. I think it's moving way too fast, because we haven't healed the environment yet. And for us to be able to produce more degrees and certificates, we need students ready to do that, and that isn't happening in our environment right now. And I'm really concerned, because they're considering disproportionate funding to community colleges, that we would get like 70% of FTE, as we always did, and 30% would be for degrees and certificates. We have a disproportionate number of students in Shemecata's district who need ABE, GED, and ESOL classes. And one of our challenges is going to be how we continue to offer this, how we continue to be a comprehensive community college, because our community needs this. So I agree with all the other ideas that have come up. That's my two cents.
Thank you. Are there any final questions from the audience? We have one. Time for one more. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Jeff, I'm a first-year student here. I just had a quick question. Given the recent insurgency in free books online, free media, open source, they call it, would that be an avenue you guys would be willing to investigate utilizing either school hours or funding to minimize costs to the individual student?
Why don't we start with Ken?
Well, first of all, Jeff, I'm not familiar with that, but I'll just say, as I said earlier, conceptually, I am open to looking at anything that is going to make it more affordable for you to be here. You know, and it's a pretty broad statement, but, you know, so long as it's legal and it's not going to, and as long as it's not going to gore somebody else's products, I'm willing, I think anything and everything should be on the table for us to look at and see how we can make your education more affordable.
As a board member, I welcome new ideas.
You know, I mentioned earlier that we, it would be good to be able to get investors from the community to invest in specific programs here to ease the burden on the student population, but one of the places we'll always have a hard time getting them to invest is in the, you know, the basic skills that don't benefit perhaps their particular machining shop specifically. And I do think there's a role for that kind of online open course, especially in areas like that, where there's a great deal of material that can be learned in a large group, and maybe is not specific and hands-on as some of the things here that we teach that obviously have to be like right there in the workshop. So, you know, absolutely, I think we should look at those things.
Mickey?
Well, good question, Jeff. I'm going to go look it up tonight, because I don't know anything about the program, but I like your, the way you're thinking.
Joe?
I'd ditto Ken's comments, that, you know, if it's legal and we can do it, that administration ought to be taking a look at it.
You can probably get a YouTube of the best professors in the country for every class out there now. Supplementally and complimentary, I think, yeah, it's supportive. I'm just a big believer in the experience of the faculty and the experience of the human part of it. So I, and you need the credentials for that. So I think it's a brave new world that we're entering with what we can capture, and, but I'm just a big advocate for the classroom setting and all the dynamics that that brings. So I think it makes sense on some kind of maybe supplemental, complimentary nuance to your learning, but I think it's really important to also have the instruction in the workshop.
Thank you. Final question?
I'm Sage Freeman, and I work in the Distance Education and Shemecata Online Department, and I want to thank you all. Actually, it's really a pleasure to be here and to hear you in the background. I think you're all very qualified and forward, and I'm just excited to see what happens. I just wanted to comment one thing about open education resources, and that is that sometimes they're viewed as online classes and only online, but that's not necessarily true. For example, Lane Community College has partnered with their student government to develop a program to provide incentives for faculty to develop free textbooks for those very core courses, and so they've greatly reduced the cost to students on those courses that are commonly taken. Washington State has also done that as well, and those books are available pretty well. So it would be great to provide some sort of incentives, partnering with the student government, perhaps with faculty, to provide incentives to develop, you know, accredited textbooks developed by Shemecata faculty that could reduce the cost for students. Textbooks, I know, are not going to cost significantly, wouldn't be up there. I work in the Distance Education Department, so I really have a great opportunity to have that exposure to technology. And so what I'm curious about is maybe what your vision is and how you can provide access to those underrepresented groups and preparing students for the use of technology in their college experience and also in their professional career, because we know that would be a great part of that. So just curious if you have a vision on how technology might play a role.
Let's begin with Diane.
You know, I think that there can be online tutorials, you know, for students, and oftentimes there is when you take a distance learning class, where you review how to get in and use the material and how to navigate the system. I think there can be tutorials at the college, too, you know, if they're able to get on campus and how to use systems and work with different kinds of materials and things. Certainly, there are a number of online courses where students can learn to manipulate and navigate different kinds of programs and things. And working with the faculty, too, to provide that kind of specialized training that's needed for their particular class, and working with distance learning to do that, too.
Thank you. Betsy?
So I'm sure that you know this, in fact, I'm sure that you're probably the person that facilitated that, but we are doing some of that, I think, already at Shemecata, using technology to serve underrepresented students and communities to some extent, or to connect classes at different campuses so that they can be, you know, obviously taught at the same time. I think as far as, you know, the interest I have in your question is really to do with underserved communities, and the ways we're able to access them technologically through the high schools perhaps, or, you know, even in just our learning centers are particularly important for those guys, as we, you know, perhaps can't develop a physical presence in some places, but can make use of somebody else's facility and our own technology to at least get a start on working with them.
Thank you. Mickey?
Well, I think it's definitely an area that we should continue to look at, because it's going to be, it's going to just keep growing. And our students these days are very comfortable with the electronic age, at least the younger set. The older ones, some of them are still pretty resistant, and they're, you know, but I'm trying to convince some of them and work with them and say, you know, it's not all that scary. But I think there are lots of ways that we could investigate to expand there. But one of the problems with online classes is one thing you don't get working with a computer is that personal instruction, and a lot of the underrepresented groups need that motivation provided by a person. And we need to keep that in mind, because that's an aspect of it that needs to be there, definitely.
Thank you. Joe?
Well, that question was way over my head. I'm one of those retired folks that Mickey just mentioned. But what I have to do is defer to faculty and students on those kinds of ideas, and then ask administration from a board perspective to explore those kinds of opportunities, because I personally don't have any knowledge of what you're talking about, Sage.
Thanks, Joe. James?
Yeah, I think it has to be explored further. I also agree with what Marty said about the personal touch. 7% of communications is words only, and all the nonverbal communication that goes on, I'm not sure you can capture that all on distance learning. So yes, it needs to be pursued further and enhanced, but I just can't see Plato talking to all the students completely 100% online. I think there has to be some of that personal instruction that's a part of it.
Thanks, James. Ken?
Well, it's probably like Joe, the other oldest dog up here. Now I'm a dog. Obviously, technology is playing a rapidly increasing piece in the delivery of educational components, and I think that's a good thing. And it has the opportunity to get us to places where we can't go physically. I mean, so there's some really good things, as Betsy mentioned, we have a way now to tie into three campuses and present a single class. I mean, those are great economies of scale. I guess, and I, so I think we need to continue to utilize technology to serve as well. The one thing I would say is, you know, I would hope, and maybe it's just old school, I would hope that we never forget the value of a teacher in a classroom. There's no substitution for face-to-face, for eye-to-eye. Someone that presents emotionally and all the other things that a teacher and instructor brings to a class, that's a big fabric of the educational process that I don't think technology should replace. We can use it as an asset, but never a replacement. There's no substitute for human interaction, and I think we will always learn best when we learn from somebody that we can look in the eye, ask a question. We've taken a lot of the personality out of society with all the technology we have and everything else we do. You know, kids now sit and text each other, and they're five feet apart. I mean, it scares me that we're losing the human element, the human interaction, so, and to me, it's critical in education. I very much appreciate and value what I got from the instructors from my first grade through college, and I never want to see that go away.
Thank you, Ken. Well, the time has flown by, and I would like to take this opportunity to thank each of you for joining us this afternoon and for your candid responses to all of our questions. We very much appreciate it. I would also like to thank the audience for your attendance and your participation in this process. And I would also like to remind each of you to vote on May 21st, in the May 21st election. And to that degree, if you have not registered to vote, we have a table set up right over there, across the way, that you can go ahead and register to vote today. So hopefully you'll take advantage of that. Finally, I'd like to say to the audience that all of our candidates audience that all of our candidates have graciously agreed to stay and spend a few minutes. If you have individual questions for them or if you'd just like to meet them, please feel free to do so. And thank you all for coming, and have a very good evening. Thank you.
Thank you.